My pledge to the Act of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, my nation, my empire, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We call order this meeting of the town council. The first item of business is announcements. I have none. Are there any councils who have announcements or things?
You have one. Okay, you've seen our C R M C notice that you want to announce that it's like the agenda. I put it on the table in front of you.
The C R M C notice that we have received requires a response which is prior to the next council meeting. So my intention would be to have the administrator take this for action and conduct the necessary action. I would seek a motion to assign that to the administrator.
Second.
Discussion on that. All in favor? Any other announcements? The next item is approval of minutes for June 1st.
Approval of minutes at the town council meeting, June 1st, 2023, and also June 6th, 2021.
Discussion on the minutes, both June 1st and 6th. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. The next are the department head reports. We have reports in the package for the court, the police chief, the finance director, the assessor, and the fire chief.
Motion to approve. Has anybody wanted to pull one to come?
I'm gonna pull one.
Oh, second.
Motion is made in second. Go ahead.
Just quickly, Carol, yeah, coordinate the I T personnel if you had any issues with the website. Yeah, leads, all the visual leads for constable changes and try for hybrid. How is that going? I know it's been a lot. I know the Wi-Fi's working too, right? It's not your home.
That's just a standard statement that you so you will know that day to day that something that comes up, they coordinate with me to take care of it. Sometimes the server goes down and I have to go down the hall and take care of it for him or assist him on something remotely. But it's going perfectly fine.
And you're happy with the working?
I'm happy.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion to place on file, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. The next item of business is all business item one, requesting the group of seniors to have a dedicated telephone number and a liaison to serve between the seniors and the council and the councilor. Who will be that liaison? Present with us is Angela Denham, who is the author of the document before before us. Angela?
I just wanted to say, L C C has been working to try and make the community center inviting the seniors. It's very talented. However, it needs to be addressed. Much more is needed from this town because seniors are unique people with unique needs. They need someone who has an understanding and knowledge of everything seniors to address their issues as individuals and as a group. Communication is essential and very lacking in this town. They definitely need more than that. So the importance here for our seniors is clear information and understanding by having one-on-one conversations, updates on changes in government concerning seniors, educational issues, also inviting seniors to participate in knowledgeable, informational and supportive discussions that concern them and that they can use for everyday life. What is happening? As they navigate events from one building to the next, trying to find where to go or when that event or class was yesterday or last week, they are in the wrong building. Make it simple and start from today, please. So my question is, have you found a place yet for our seniors? In our previous meeting, you were going to look for interest. FYI, unfortunately, for the past year for our seniors, our meetings have been and continue to be intrepid in Westport because they have open up space for us. Our request, we're requesting a dedicated telephone number for our seniors to call for any information they need. We are also requesting that a liaison be appointed between our seniors and council to address our concerns. We voted Friday together, June 9th, as over 30 L C seniors met in Tiburon, and we asked that councilman, Andrew, to relax anymore. Be that person. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments?
I do think that, I appreciate you guys bringing that, that your concerns to us again. I know things move slowly. So, thank you for bearing with us. The first request about having a phone, like a dedicated phone line, it's not something that we've necessarily considered before as a council, but I do think at some point we need more full-time or between-the-part-time senior services coordinator that can help people, put them in the right, right direction. I think that right now that has landed more on the police department and Sue, Sue Preston.
I just, I disagree. You have a social services director who handles all of that stuff now. I mean, if she feels she's overwhelmed, then yes, maybe you need somebody else. But it's my understanding that at this point in time, she doesn't feel like that she's overwhelmed. And I know she's here in attendance, so she can speak for herself. But I just don't want people to perceive that they do not have that resource already because they do.
And I think that maybe it would be better served making people aware of that opportunity because I think a lot of it lands on the police department. I think a lot of people automatically call Sue Preston or the police department for those sorts of concerns or needs.
Somewhat. I mean, I feel a lot of phone calls do it because it's out in all of our publications, the phone number to call is my phone number or the police department. And that's intentional. So it's not like it falls on their shoulders to do something that they're now already asking to be the intermediary, to get what I mean.
Well, I think that creates some confusion though, as to where people can turn and help if they need or need information.
I disagree, but that's okay.
Let me say, as a statement regarding telephone service, we have recently established a line to which people can call in order to reserve a seat on the bus. That same line could be used and can effective this evening be used as a place that a person can call saying, I have the following question and need to be referred to the right person to answer that question. We can use that very same line for that purpose. And if you think that might satisfy the need, we could do that tomorrow. We could have that be the announced way that a person who doesn't know who else to call can call that number. That line gets referred to Barbara Rocha, who has volunteered to be the person who is the gatekeeper. And that then would allow us to answer questions if they were to come forward. Do you think that's, is that what people seem to be seeking? Or in what sense do people have a sense that they're, they don't know who to call? Yes?
I think the problem is communication in every step of the way. At the meeting that we had at Stone Church, which we should all really be ashamed of because we have nobody that will let us speak here, the problem was communication. There were so many different people there. People, Sue's number isn't published, it's her private number. So, you know, nobody would consider, they can't find that number. As far as, and we were not looking for a person to sit by that phone. We were looking for a dedicated line with an answering phone that one of us would come in periodically and see what his problems were.
Fair enough. And that's precisely what I'm saying. What we have right now is the ability for a person to call in, leave a message, and that message could be sent to, if there were a clearinghouse kind of a person, could be sent to that person instead of to the bus dispatcher. It's a quick solution. It gets done tomorrow. It's not necessarily the final solution, but I think it's a way to answer this question.
No, it's a beginning. It's a beginning. But I disagree with Carol in that people should be calling the police department. I don't think anybody would want to do that. They're so busy. The dispatch, you know, they're dispatching left and right. And a lot of people would call 911 because they don't know any other number to call for the police. So I think that, I think what you know, a lot of people don't know. And I don't know how to get that information out. A lot of people aren't on social media. They don't get the newspapers. I don't know how to do that. And we need to come up with a way to do that. Maybe it's a newsletter once a month.
Well, I think it's all of the above. I think it's done on a website. It's done on a newsletter. It's done on telephone calls. But basically what I'm saying is the quick solution to the lack of an ability to call a number would be to use that number that we currently use for bus service to use for, I have a question unrelated to bus service. And I have the following, I want to know when, whatever, when the senior trip to Newport for such-and-such-a-thing is planned. Does that, I mean, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
I tend to agree with her that calling the police department, you have to be careful. Calling the police department is a little tough because some people have a personal issue. They want to get settled. And if they call in the police department, it may, it may not satisfy what they want to do. In other words, I think that if they were calling a line where someone was there, they know that could answer their question rather than the police department that's recorded also. It'd be a little tough. But I did speak to Amy Mooney that runs the community center. And she seems to think that while she's open to anything that you want to do, she'd like to see a need study done. In other words, a need study, sit down with Sue and whoever is willing to come in and talk to her and have somebody professionally go around, talk to everybody, and develop something for this center that could fit the needs for everybody. And that need study would dictate how this building would be used and how she would use, you know, the services she had and what we could dedicate to her also. And that's something I think you should consider.
We are thinking similarly in that I, the administrator and I talked this morning concerning a study that was done similarly in another community. And we're actively engaged in getting that entity to come and tell us what was worth in that and how to do it. So that's short, that's longer term. The short term is to announce and make clear that the number you call is such-and-such. And that phone number, which I don't have sitting in front of me, but it's straightforward to put out, is the same number you called to reserve a bus trip to the community center for lunch. And that number would be used in the short term to get the person steering the right way.
I think that's better than calling the police department.
Meanwhile, your point about the, the study that's to be done, anytime anybody says there's going to be a government study, I realize the eyes start to roll. But the reality is, that's what got the entity we're talking to headed in the direction that provided service to people that wasn't being provided before. So we think that's important.
Thank you.
Thanks. Yes.
I just wanted people to know that, I mean, working through how I get connected up there with girls, it's through the churches, it's through the school department, it's through the town hall, there's all variables. People don't feel comfortable in calling a number and expressing just anybody what they need to talk to somebody about it. And I can't emphasize enough the word confidentiality. But this is how I get my referrals, by way of the churches, by way of the school department, I'm connected to the social services wherever they're. And village improvement society, same thing. They'll have questions and they'll say, you know, do you know if anybody can ask my questions? And that information has already been told out. Every so often, I will send emails to the people that I dealt with in the past who have made referrals. So as far as not, somebody not knowing that there is a director of social services in town, I don't know how that can't be. And again, it's then all the paperwork in reference to what the town hall provides as far as people. And I mean, I would think if somebody saw a director of social services, that would be a burst up. Maybe to call the town hall and say, you know what, I got a question. Can I possibly connect with Sue Sissom? Going back again, because it was my home phone that I used, that's been changed somewhat. And anytime Carol will get a call or any girls in the office, in the clerk's office get a call, they'll turn around and they'll take the name. They're not wondering what the issue is. They're not writing any personal data out other than the name of the person and the person's name. I will make that phone call either that day or the next couple of days. So it's worked. If you want to have a waiting on that to figure out where we go from there, I think you better be careful when it comes to the distinction with the transportation and making the schedule for transportation and what people need. Personally, you better make sure that somebody else is willing to take that on in addition to answering questions about the transportation schedule.
Okay.
I just wanted to say, you talked about doing a study and maybe opening up this building a little bit more, you saying, you're changing it a little bit. What was that? Was that what I was hearing?
Speaking of this building right now, of opening it up a little?
Something you talked about, Amy.
I don't think that's what you said. I have a few questions, Angel. I'm waiting for it.
Can I just finish my question?
Sure, go ahead.
All I want to say is that in the past, the director of this building is not in charge. It's the board that does the voting. And every time I would go to the director in the past, I have to check with the board. I have to check with the board. And in the past, the decisions made by the board didn't include the seniors.
When you go to the, when you go to the manager, how do you represent yourself? Who are you? That, I don't mean who are you literally, but in what sense are you representing yourself? As a spokesperson for the seniors?
No, I'm, yeah, in the, yeah, when I, when I was trying to get them back in here and be together, yeah. I said, I'm watching seniors and I'm trying to get back in the building and should have these people to socialize. And that wasn't able to be done because the board did not vote that in. The board voted it, no. You gotta sit outside.
That's no longer the case, would we agree?
What's that?
That is no longer.
That's no longer the case. But what I'm trying to say is, if you're going to do a study on what people want to use this building, you're going to override the board.
Well, the proposal is, to put it bluntly, we need a senior center. And I would argue that this place is a suitable place to be gathered for a senior center. If we find from the survey that people say, you're completely mistaken. You have no idea what we're asking for. This isn't it. Then that's valuable to know. My point is, right now, from the standpoint of the community, this is and always has been since its creation, the senior center, the children's center, the place where, where things are done in the summertime, et cetera.
So, Angela, I just wanted a few questions before I take a quick moment. He says, as they navigate events from building to the next building and try to find where to go, what buildings are you talking about? This one, I imagine, right?
I'm talking about the wellness center.
Wellness center?
The library, the churches. When anybody's having an event, this building, the game club.
Brown Elton.
Yeah.
It's communication.
Yeah, again, it's communication, everything.
No, I, I got it. I just want to make sure.
And I'm seeing if that works or not.
So I think that the need study, I've been talking about a need study for a year now, is obvious. We need that data. It's vital. And what I, my interpretation of a need study is, you're going to ask the seniors what they want, what they need, and how many of you are there? And who's going to come to this building? That's what I think a need study is. Just to go down real quick, I just want to take a second. You said your folks were in Westport and Tiburon. What were your experiences there?
What, what were what?
Your experiences in Tiburon and Westport. It says, unfortunately, the past year, tended to be in Tiburon and Westport. There is open up space for us. What was yours? What was your experience there?
It was very good. You mean, as far as, what is my experience?
Yeah, what did you experience? What did you experience when you walked in? How many people were there? What activities did you have? Was there communication there? Tell me what it was like there in Tiburon and Westport.
Well, we had a Halloween party. We had a Christmas party. We had, you know, get together and talk.
And how, approximately, how many seniors would go to those?
Anywhere from 30, up, 30, 35.
And the key, the key, I'm sorry, the, the phone number, is that commonplace? And they have one in Tiburon, Westport? Do you know, for seniors?
Well, they both have senior centers, so should they do?
My understanding of this building, my, my understanding, and I checked back in April, was it's open Monday, Wednesday, Friday for senior lunches. And they were getting about 50 seniors during that time. So that's my, this is my understanding, my understanding. Approximately 50, Monday, Wednesday, Friday. And after lunch, the lunches were 10 to 2, oh, I'm sorry, 10 to 12. And after 12, it dwindled down to about 10 senior. So, my understanding also is the senior center is closed. It closes at 5. And no one can get in after 3 because the students, ironically, today, there's no more school. So there'll be no more students in there. So the senior center will be open till 5. And this is my understanding. I couldn't remember. So from 10 to 5, the seniors can come in here. I guess they got a new TV, they got chairs. And they're also, you know, open Tuesdays and Thursdays. They're open five days a week. So I just wanted to get that straight in my mind and clear. But, thanks.
Yes. I, I'm just going to make a statement because I think the council has known the desire of citizens for several years. It hasn't just happened within the last two or three years. And I think it's unfortunate that the American Legion Hall, the old American Legion Hall, was not turned into a senior center. I mean, I know it's too late now. You've got other offices in there, but when you had, you knew you needed a place. And when we renovated it from what it was to what it is now, I'm sad that you didn't think about the seniors and maybe making that a senior center. Do you know what I'm saying? Right now, we're the old treasury, treasure department, you know, the American Legion Hall, which is the building right next to us.
The number eight schoolhouse?
Yeah.
Or this church?
Yeah. This, that's, well, it used to be, American Legion used to be there.
Right.
But, um, no. Now, I don't understand why it wasn't taken in consideration when the seniors requested something years ago, that that wasn't a thought to do. But now, I know we renovated it into, oh, well, I don't know how many offices or anything else, but it would have been a perfect place. So how can we?
Just, just to be clear, we have not, there has not been an action that has taken it off the table as a potential destination, if that's what you're saying. In other words, the meeting hall that we use on the third, on the basement level, is it the old police station?
No, no.
Wrong place?
No. Come up one building.
Grange Hall.
The, the, well, the, yeah.
You mean the town hall. You mean the town hall with the treasures office, everything left.
In the, in, oh, it's, yeah, sorry. Yeah, next door this way. That, that building that came out, that you took over from the treasures years ago.
Okay.
That's what I am referring to as the old Legion Hall.
I see.
But I mean, it, it's just a statement. It's too late now. You renovated it into other offices. But you moved it. You needed a place way back before that happened. And I just, that just, it's just a statement saying, I'm saddened that that wasn't taken into consideration, which would have been a perfect place, a perfect size for a senior center, which is too late now. I know you've got it all into office.
Okay. Would it be possible for us to have the Oddfellas Hall basement, first floor, to be used as a senior center? Let's think of that.
That is a, that is an achievable situation today, yes. Since we have authority to schedule the use of that basement level on a every-week basis. So, yes, we could make that decision. That has, that has tended to be, my understanding, not considered an acceptable solution, at least long-term. So, we could say, by restricting its use and finding another place for L C makers and other sorts of users like that, we could, we could designate that as a senior center. But the reality is, this building, despite the action of the board earlier, this building has been now acknowledged to be the place that seniors are welcome to gather. The, the data supports the fact that, and you shake your head up, okay?
I'm not, no. I'm agreeing with you that, that there's no room for seniors here except two or three chairs downstairs. When we come for lunches, that's something different. We're talking senior center that we could have.
A place that was either, that was dormant during the period seniors weren't in it, and then when the seniors came, it would be available. Okay. And are you saying that, if I'm combining two testimonies together, are you, are you saying collectively that were we to use the Oddfellas Hall in that fashion on the first floor, we could, so we could do that now, we wished?
I think one of the problems, if I may, one of the problems, I've visited a couple of senior centers in the state. And one of the problems is that, I think, most people see in this is that their buildings are totally accessible. And when I say totally accessible, you can win any time during the day. You can utilize the building. You can, you can walk into whoever's running the place and say, we'd like to have a meeting here tomorrow night. We got 20 people or 15 people. We've got coming, somebody from the state coming down, is going to explain a couple of senior programs to us, and it's done. Over here, they have set schedules where children are coming here to be watched, and it funds the place. So you can't just say, do away with that.
So this building doesn't lend itself to that?
That, to that type of, exactly. Because what she has done downstairs is, I mean, I've been here for lunches. We don't get the lunch crowd we thought we were going to get here. But there's 30 or 40 lunches that go out.
Seventy meals.
Seventy meals go out.
Yes, right.
And, but she doesn't get the lunch crowd here that everybody said, well, we, we seniors don't, and there's great meals here. I've come to a number of. And she set up, you know, a place in the back. She is really dry.
Three people?
Yeah.
But three people?
Yeah, but no, there's other chairs there. There's other chairs there. I understand what you're saying. And I agree with you. I agree with you. However, what they envisioned can't happen in this building in its present state.
Any of the buildings?
Yeah, in, in its present state.
Sorry, any of the buildings that we have?
Not, not in, not in the present state.
No, no, but she's agreeing with me. In other words, because of the programs that it dedicated, this building is dedicated to.
Understood. Now, why does another bill, are you saying also that the Oddfellas Hall, whatever we were to do with it?
Oh, no.
Does itself not constitute?
Oh, no, that could be because you've dedicated the whole building and say, take that building and then here's seniors, do what you want to do with this building. And then the seniors could run their programs, do the things. They got the keys. They're running the programs. Right now, that's not happening here. The board is involved. You have a director involved. There's certain things that just aren't available.
Mike, Mike has one.
What's the future use when D W builds their building? What's the future use of that?
I already, yeah.
What's the future use of where they are currently located? It is our current plan with the proposals that have been made with respect to the parking lot, to demolish it.
No.
To demolish it. There have been those who have said that we ought to reconsider that because it constitutes a place that we could assemble. But that is not, that is not the direction we're headed right now. But, but. But that is not, that is not the direction we're headed right now, but, but...
What the seniors are asking for, and I've tried to schedule this building for things.
That building?
This building.
This building?
So this building is a community center, it's a, it's a private, non-profit enterprise. And so, what the seniors are asking for is something that would be theirs autonomously. And even the Oddfellows Home doesn't really, the Oddfellows Hall doesn't really offer that because they're at the mercy of other people scheduling it. So to have a twenty-four-seven dedicated senior center, like, that's not a problem tomorrow, but the phone number. But that doesn't exist in any of our current buildings. So, the solution that they're asking for, this doesn't fit that bill. Oddfellows Hall gets closer to it, because nobody's using it. But we don't really have something in town that could be administered by the, by a group of seniors that they would have the key to it twenty-four-seven, and they would then schedule things other than seniors, but they would have total autonomy over that building. So that's what Mrs. Passmore was saying about the opportunity that was with the Veterans Hall, that that could have been a dedicated, so the DBW building, the old fire barn, I understand the plan, the global plan for the parking lot, but it might be that that's a solution to what the seniors are asking for.
See, when I, when I looked at that building, we can do things about getting to the parking lot in the back. In fact, I offered you, I said I would get a kitchen for it, I could, you know, you and I had that discussion. I think it's a crime to knock that building down. And, and I think that that building, in whatever shape we wanna put it, if it's four walls, a heating system, a kitchen, and a bathroom, that's all we need. Because then a nurse could come there weekly, you could get programs there at their leisure.
Well, and you can get seniors to know that they can go somewhere at any time.
Yep.
Not walk in somewhere and they're in the wrong place, or walk in somewhere, or they can't go there at this time, or, no, they know it's dedicated for them, walk in, sit down, say hello.
The other, the other thing it accomplishes, it relieves this building for the programs that they wanna run, and, you know, through its capacity for children, for everything else that they wanna do, without trying to take a section for the seniors.
Tony, is this a historical society ran a decision on the old fire barn yet?
No, not yet.
Are we expecting it?
Uh, yes.
Okay, okay. I...
I'm sorry.
I mean, I, I've, I've been in that place recently. It is a disaster.
Yes, but it's a shell. It's a shell, that's all I'm saying.
I don't really know what it is, it's all...
I have, I put that...
Someone that's, that's qualified to look at it and give us an assessment.
Well, it doesn't look like a submarine, so I'll tell you, it's not ready for prime time.
No, it needs, it needs work.
I used to be a group leader when I was a kid, it wasn't ready for prime time.
All right, just all the way to the back.
Um, I just have a question, if you guys have been to Westport and Tiverton, I need to stand up. Do you know, how do their communities provide for it? Never mind the building, but is there a separate funding for it, is there a separate budget?
It's funded by the town.
It's funded by the town. Westport, and Westport will be a different state, so it doesn't, but that might be your curiosity, is where's the money come from? Because obviously, especially if you get an empty building.
I would love for grants, lots of grants to open that deliberation.
Please, ladies and gentlemen, let's not have a conversation back and forth again.
I would love for F E twenty you, in your deliberations and study, to go to one of the senior centers, and then you'll know what we're looking for.
Oh, I, I've been there, I know what Tiverton has, I've seen it.
I was, I sang with the choir, we go to the person homes, and we went to Westport this week, and I was just amazed at what they have. But it's constantly open and dedicated to seniors. Now, some days they have daycare, that's not what we're asking for.
What's not what we're asking for?
Daycare, daycare. But they have, they have it there, both ways, in Westport, they have daycare, but that's, you know, that's a lot of money. We're gonna need it soon, I have, yeah.
I don't think.
So, I, I talked with, I tried to talk with Amy, the director of the senior center, she's out on leave, so I talked to the lady that's, right, and the manager, and I asked her, is there availability in here for the seniors? And she said, yes, money probably from ten to three, but I guess you guys are saying that's not true?
No, no. It's available. It's, no one's brought anything to them to propose in a certain time. A certain, I think it's Wednesday, I, I mean, she'll, she'll hold bingo, she'll do anything. She got a big TV to have a movie on. How would we know that? How would we know that? There's no communication. Well, that's...
Well, I think we're all here trying to figure these things out, so we can have communication. So, but I mean, when I talked to her, she says ten to three, and in my thought, I said, well, why can't you guys plan something on a Tuesday? Always a lot of things.
Tuesday and Thursday, because they don't have lunches on Tuesdays and Thursdays. They could have five hours, you could plan something, and tell them...
Have you ever been to a senior center?
No, I haven't.
No, and seriously, I really wish you would, because it's not like we walk in and there's nothing, and we put everything out that we wanna do, and then take it all up, and please, we have to do that. Somebody's over here playing cards, somebody's over there, two people being trouble with the computer. I went to a mandolin class up there, there's something going on in all their rooms, but they don't roll it up at the end of the day and leave, and that's what we have. Yes, we can come to a movie, yes, we can come to eat, but we can't leave anything here, it's too busy. It's just not set up for what we're looking for, there's so much going on here.
Is there a director if we senior centers, a paid person?
Oh, yes, definitely.
So then that's another cost to the town. I mean, we're, I'm trying to understand what exactly you want, all these things, you don't want some money for somebody in there unless you gotta volunteer a little bit less.
Some of the towns have volunteers.
Yeah, well, to get a volunteer to come in there, three or four volunteers to separate the days. Other than that, if you get a paid person in there, it's gonna be another...
So basically, you're saying, if we build it, you will come?
Yes, exactly.
If we build it, if we remodel it, if we have something, then you can just do it? Who's gonna staff it?
Depends on what we, what we get and how much we can have there.
We can run a whole program. It's small, you can't just like open up to say, "Oh, now there's gonna be three hundred people walking, please." You gotta start and, and be a welcoming place, and have people come in and give you ideas, and give you thoughts on what they would like to see, and what they want to do.
I'm just doing theoretical here, if we had a space, this mythical building that we existed in, which is okay, it's yours, what are you gonna do? What are you gonna do? I'm, I'm serious.
Well, you know, they have programs already set up, we've looked at other places, and I just told you what Tiverton does, but it would be a matter of what people coming from Little Compton would want.
I, I think it's all about, I think what you're asking is, where's the money? It's all about the money, like everything. It's all about the money.
Doesn't the state provide the money if you have a senior center?
I mean, I don't think you would need a business plan to present to us, you know, you know, more than, we feel the need to hear you.
That's, that's why I said...
But we need, we need a need assessment, we need a business plan, we need a model, you know, we just can't, I don't think we'd be appropriate for this council just to, you know...
And by the time we get that, that building will be demolished?
Well, I don't, but the historical society's going awful slow, so it's been months, but Thomas, we can carry it on.
I would like the council, I would like the council to consider stopping the stock of its destruction until a need study is, some type of a study is, so at least we have the option of utilizing that building if the need study dictates that it's required.
You know, I think we can, I think we, we, we can vote to expense some money to have a need study, and maybe to hire someone to help out these folks. We can all use the upper money, I think that'd be a great fit for the upper money. But again, I don't have any documentation or data on how much money that's gonna cost, so we're gonna need something.
Amy has been involved with need studies in different towns, and I suggest that you have a discussion with her.
Um, she's fairly, I'm, I'm saying, you know, not that she's not professional, I don't know her background. I'm talking to a professional that, I don't know what she's...
She's a professional in one of the cuts, what I'm saying is, she has been involved with need studies, and she knows people.
Well, I think you want to expedite this thing, right? The young lady is on maternity, right?
Yeah, she's...
So, I'm offering that, I'm happy to make a motion, I just don't know how much money to make a motion about. I don't have any data to do that.
Perhaps I'd solicit a motion to engage a need study meanwhile to put on hold the decision to demolish the building, in case it is, it's the solution.
I'll move that.
One second.
Bob, is there other candidates that use the Oddfellows Hall? Because I did talk to Angela about that probably a year ago. The reason we didn't follow up on that is because we were starting up the town hall, and that kinda took all our time, finances and everything, but I did talk to her about that, she said it needed a lot of work. But a lot of work, I mean, I think if you went in there for a minimum amount of money temporarily, we could put it in there, but it was this makers group, I...
Right.
When I, when I suggested that, they emailed me and said, "Something in fact, before you stop putting people in there and realize it, quit it," awesome, so I don't know how that would have happened.
That's why I think the need study would unveil that. That would say, "We're looking for something that's completely dedicated to seniors only. When seniors are not in it, the doors are closed," right? I mean, that's, that's the message.
I don't know, I'm not speaking for the group, I'm speaking for myself, but I think that when the doors are closing, you need a place with need for boy scouts or girl scouts or whatever. I don't think anybody's gonna...
I'm only speaking of a starting point of the discussion. The starting point of the discussion is, this is the senior center of Little Compton. If you wanna use it, you have to go through a process by which to use it for other than senior needs. That would be a condition of the need study that we, that we...
I don't think, I mean, we have a building, Inspector, we have a fire chief, and they can give us an assessment of what it's gonna cost to make that a safe place for seniors. But...
What I wanna be sure is I'm capturing, there are a number of silent people here, not silent because you're afraid, but silent, you're just, somebody else talk first. The reality is, there's gonna be, there's gonna be an input from a whole host of people that are seniors that say, "This is what I would like to have," and that's what I see a need study telling us, that says, "All right, we only have thirty-seven people who wanna have a year-round senior center. Ninety-eight people think we're just fine the way we are." I'm not suggesting that's gonna be the outcome, I'm just saying, if that were the outcome, then we'd go one direction. If, on the other hand, what appears to be, what's being said tonight is, "We need a place that seniors have control over who comes in and when they come in." Is that accurate?
Yeah.
If that's the case, then that's where that study would be focused, and then we'd get a number put out, and then we can make a more intelligent decision.
The name over the door is Senior Center, that's who's in control of it, I think that's what the gist I'm getting at all is, I still. So there's a motion made and seconded, or the tables are...
Further, any further discussion? Can you repeat the motion, Count?
Motion to authorize a need study for a senior center and to put on hold the decision to demolish thirty Compton.
That's the motion, is there further discussion? All in favor of the motion? Aye, are there any opposed?
I'm asking, request by Angela, she said that they voted the seniors to ask Councilman Andrew Ariarte more to be that president, so you, you want to accept that?
I'd like to, I was expected.
I mean, I don't...
I'm happy to make, I'm happy to make that motion.
Well, I agree. Motion to appoint, is there a second to appoint Councilor Ariarte Moore's that position?
Second.
You want to plug it for a ladies on the between...
Yeah, we, we've been meeting like once a month, and even we're having lunch together, we're just meeting to have some things to be, but we have just conversation on Friday or whatever, we need to...
We're keeping a prior status to when the meetings are, right?
Yes, yes.
And maybe the youngest guy is seeing you lunch.
Angela, maybe you can give Andrew your number?
Yeah.
And maybe you two can kind of follow up with each other about exactly what Andrew's position wants, and maybe you can work with him on this communication aspect, and let him know, and then he can bring it to the council we can vote on. That be okay?
Motion's made and seconded, sir.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion, certified by saying, aye, any opposed? Thank, thank you very much for your edification.
Edification.
Next item is new business to authorize professional development stipends to be paid for twenty-twenty-three.
I'll make that motion, second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
None, thank you. The next item is to receive letters of interest in the point as able for the following. The aggregate, in every case, the only applicant for the position is the incumbent. In every case, the incumbent seeks reappointment. Little Compton Cultural Conservancy Trust, Don McNunn. Motion to reappoint Don McNunn.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Harbor Master, Mike Matson.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Assistant Harbor Master, Jeff.
I'll make that motion. Chris.
Chris Gray, excuse me.
Brother.
Dispute, talking, he doesn't really talk. The motion is made and seconded, further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Members of the pension committee, Pam, Warren, and Mara.
Motion to approve, second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Probate Judge, Judge Naderio.
Motion to approve, second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thanks. Zoning Board of Review, the board member is Herb Case, and the alternate, the alternate member is Mike Overon.
Motion to approve, second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Next item of business is to set salaries and benefits for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four in accordance with a number of things, contracts, results of financial planning, et cetera.
Motion to approve, second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
A memo, sorry, receive a resignation from Bill Moore resigning as the Director of Public Works for the town effective July fifteenth, twenty-twenty-three. Is there a motion to...
Accept with regret and send him a letter of thank you, second.
The motion is made and seconded to accept with regret his resignation and to send him a letter of thank you. Is there further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And an opinion letter from the town solicitor to the tax assessor who requested his advice concerning the Little Compton Game Club tax exempt statute.
Sir, yes, Denise has been asking me sometime for opinion as to the effect of Section forty-three dash three dash three of the General Laws, and whether or not that applies to the Little Compton Game Club. And based upon the documents that she gave me, and also, she had said that she has a difficulty meeting with them. I do think that a showing needs to be made under two subsections of that statute. Subsection eight, their charitable activities, and subsection twenty-five, which relates to, I understand that's a section that you can rely on in the past, but it relates to their efforts to keep their property open. And, you know, the parameter that I typically use on advice in matters of this nature is whether or not the property involved is four or ten acres on the device, and there are two parcels that it is. So I would recommend two things. First, if this exemption is to be extended to the Little Compton Game Club age, that there be a showing under subsection eight as to their charitable activities, and also, I understand this is a matter... And also I understand there's some methods to keep that, their property open. That's the first thing. That would be for this fiscal year coming up. Secondly, I forwarded over to Carol a proposed resolution and an amendment to section 43 dash 3 dash 3, uh, which would make the exemption permanent. If you read the statute, there's slightly less than 50 such exemptions, a similar organization to the state. So long as the town council endorses that, I don't see any problem with General Assembly including it. Uh, the difficulty is that I, I think they're, they're wrapping up tonight. So this would be, yeah, this would be for the next General Assembly session. That's why I think you need to have a showing now as to what the charitable activities are so that the exemption can be extended for this next year. If that law passes, then they don't have to keep coming back to the town with a showing of exactly what they're doing in the organization.
I, I talked to Terry DeSisto about this after I got a phone call from Chad Valcourt. Um, because I read the letter that Denise sent. She said that it's not a charitable organization and they don't contribute to charity anymore, which from what I was understanding is not true. So I think Denise sent you some erroneous facts.
No, I didn't, I didn't say it wasn't a charitable organization.
You said they don't contribute to charities anymore is what you said. I read the letter, I read the letter. Chad, would you like to speak on this, please?
Sure.
Scott Lewis is the treasurer, vice president.
Can you prove that you do what I was told? Did you give more money out to charities than you would give back to the town in taxes? Now, this is another place that might be open to seniors also, the game club.
So Little Compton Game Club since 2012 received the exemption from the town council. 2018, the tax assessor brought us back to funding, right? We discussed going forward. At that meeting, we agreed that we would send you a tax return. Every year, we would send you a list of all our donations. We've complied every year since 2018. In fact, we've donated $23,000 over that 10 years period. And every year this year, for example, we increased it by 35%. We gave $3,000 a year during COVID and we didn't have any fundraisers. So we, as far as we're concerned, we haven't changed what we're doing.
Can you give any idea where you gave any money, what charities you gave?
Sure.
Would that be okay?
Suicide and good death.
Suicide and good death, every year.
She can attest to that.
How much?
Absolutely.
How much do they give?
Off the top of my head, I can't remember, but I have the record at home. They have been very generous.
Roughly?
$5,000 or more.
$5,000 or more per year?
To Little Compton Assistance and to Little Compton Food Bank. This year we gave, you're literally $11,000. They were having a problem in the spring, getting nothing running. We gave them $500. December, every December we meet, we meet here, come up with donations, we give them another $6,000 just to keep them going.
Boy, boy scouts, uh, use the property once a week for their meetings and we don't charge them for that, so.
If you would, uh, I'm, I was not aware of our requirement on you that you satisfied. So if we could do as the solicitor suggests and ask you to present that in a way that we, the council can, can review it again and if we already submitted it, my apologies for our having not properly looked at it.
The 2022 was given to Carol on Tuesday when I was notified that we're having a meeting on Thursday.
Yes, the tax assessor gets the same thing every year.
I did not get it this year.
Yes, are you aware of the tax return is done on May 15th? And it goes through checks and balances? Then I have to present it to my members to approve and that was in June. So you're calling me in front of the town council because we're a week, a week out?
I asked you to meet with you and to talk to you about this.
Do you really want to go down that road?
Yes.
I've, we've had three conversations, two emails and a face to face.
I'm listening.
Yes, I have.
Let me suggest that we, that we have the input and if it's been submitted, my apologies for not having gotten it. I will, I will get that so that we can then comply with the advice we've been given because it sounds like sound advice and we can then review it and decide whether we're satisfied.
This year we gave $4,000 to them.
Thank you.
Yeah, we have a lot here.
Just a, just a question, solicitor, is there, is there a magic number as far as the donation? Does it have to be more than the tax burden or does it have to be substantially more? Or if it's less, it doesn't count? Is there a, is there a number that floats in there as far as donation goes or?
It, it does not, it is not a gray mind test. The fact that the representation has been made that the contributions exceed what the amount of taxes that would be paid is something that you should certainly consider.
Do you think this would be the appropriate time? But I think Bob's asked for backup, but I believe these two gentlemen I grew up with would be the appropriate time to give them that tax exemption.
I, I tell you, just went, I'm sorry, just saw it, none, just glanced through it. Uh, didn't have a chance to like dig in.
Yeah.
But here's what I'm looking at for this. I think that based upon these representations, based upon what the town's done the past, that it would be awkward at this time if there wasn't an extension of the tax exemption. So if you want to extend the exemption, your next meeting, vote on it then after you've had a chance to take a look at the documents that were submitted, that would be okay.
Could I vote on it now? I believe these guys and you saw what's over there, so.
You, you can because under 43 dash 3 dash 3, you have the ability to, by the terms of the statute. Uh, and once that's done, so that this doesn't become a recurring issue, I drafted up all of the necessary documents that are needed, the town would actually submit the resolution to the General Assembly as well as the proposed language. Once that would be forwarded to your legislative delegation, it would go forward on that basis. It would be in trying for the statute, about 15 other organizations like yours have done that. That's probably going to be the best existential question.
I'm going to make a motion that we extend the extension that we've given the game club in the previous years and that they seek or the town seeks in the following, on January, when the legislature gets going again, that we submit a resolution, uh, that they don't have to pay taxes. They're a nonprofit as it is right now.
Is the extension until our next meeting?
For the extension to the next meeting till we can take a vote on it?
Well, I'm trying to vote on it right now.
Oh, fair.
That's the vote I'm putting forward. If we extend the extension to the game club this year so they don't have to pay taxes because they're a char, obviously they've paid more in charities than they do with taxes. And then in January, we put a resolution in to the legislature to exempt them from all forward taxes. Second motion.
I'll second that.
Well, I got two seconds, so, well, take the one you want.
The idea of extending the decision to, to two weeks from today is not, in my opinion, onerous and would give us the opportunity to look at what's been submitted. I acknowledge that I personally had the opportunity, but did not take it to review the information. It would, it would, I would feel that reviewing that information would be important.
Right, that was in the motion now.
That's what I'm saying, that's my comment. The motion is to tonight to extend for this year the, the tax exempt status. And I'm only suggesting that that's, that's where I have the motion has been made and seconded to do it tonight. I acknowledge that, that's just my comment.
I've reviewed the, I've reviewed it.
I have not reviewed it.
So I, I can verify it from my point of view.
Terry, are you going to make your motion to allow us to vote on it?
Well, you know, this comes up in front of us every year, okay? We've always given the exemption. I'm not sure what's different about it this year, whether the tax assessor thinks we're not collecting enough taxes for the gun wash.
I don't think it's something to do with the tax assessor. I think it's depending on the.
Well, I made a motion.
If I heard you correctly, then you would.
One motion, yes.
If we extend it to next meeting? Here's the thing, you know, I'm going to say this. The, uh, uh, the, uh, the game club has to make the, has to make the representations. If you're satisfied with the oral representations that were made today and the fact that the return has been submitted, it's in order tonight, you can do it. If you're not comfortable with it, then continue it up to, so make sure the, you know, the extended so there's not a question as to whether or not the exemption is lost. So I, I think, um, the question is, is it in order tonight for vote? Yes, it is, you can. So long as you're comfortable with the statements that were made here, can that showing be made just on these statements? The answer is yes. If you want to wait to see the documentation and study it, you can do that too, so long as it's extended. But you can vote tonight.
Who normally reviews the tax returns, not the assessor?
I've never, this requires, this requires the formal action of the council. So we have to take that challenge.
Yeah, I, I apologize for not saying this in the beginning because I think I should have. There's a two-step process in, in section 43 dash 3 dash 3. Some organizations are exempted by the terms of the statute. Churches, schools, colleges, hospitals, they're out. Um, some have a specific exemption, the Holy Rosary ban in, in Chrisel. They have it because it's in the statute. For the rest of the, of the nonprofit corporations, this is a nonprofit corporation. By the way, guys, I, I looked at your documents of Secretary of State. What they need to do is satisfy a test and have a showing. Are they in fact engaging in charitable activities? I, I understand in previous years, subsection 25 was used of this section to grant the exemption. Based on what I've seen, I actually think subsection eight, they need to make a showing as to what type of charitable activities they engage in. Once that happens, then they can get the exemption so long as they've made a sufficient showing. So if you feel they've made a sufficient showing tonight, you can vote. If you'd like to take a look at the tax return that they submitted on Tuesday, then you can wait so long as the exemption is exempted. So this is something that depends on how comfortable you are doing it. If you're comfortable tonight, go ahead. You want to wait a little bit and see something? You can do that so long as you extend that exemption.
I'm going to vote for motion.
To be clear, ever since that vote was taken that they were to submit annually copies of their return and who they've given the charitable donations to, that's been given to my office and the assessors of office. And my responsibility was just to put it in their file. They complied with what they needed to do annually, give it to the town. That's what they have to do. So that's why it's not been on an agenda because it didn't, wasn't required to be on the agenda.
So it's a re, a restatement or an annual statement of their continued status as described before?
It's a copy of their tax returns and copies of the donations that they gave, a list of the donations.
Motion's made on the table, sir.
Any other comments, discussion? All in favor of the motion? Opposed? Four to one. Thank you very much. Glad the motion.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, I have a question regarding, solicitor, you're going to give that information to Carol regarding the permanent, um, what we have to do for the legislature in January?
All of the paperwork is done. However, um, as I, and I'm sorry, may I?
Please.
As I read the statute, it really can't come from you, it's actually going to come from the town.
Has to come from them.
So once the town formally adopts the resolution, what's attached to the resolution is the proposed language. That's in there, you might want to review it to make sure that I drafted it properly. But then that will be forwarded to your legislative delegation and will go through the process of the General Assembly.
So when, when should we, when should the council approve that resolution? In December, should we?
Anytime. Anytime.
At any time prior to December. But I, I, I recommend that it be done no later than December.
So why don't you get a copy of that and a copy to the game club? And when they come back and they get satisfied with them, Overon will turn it over and then we'll send it to the General Assembly.
Carol's, Carol's.
Distribution, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. No.
Next item of business is a request from Ed Burnett to use the town recreation field and veterans field on August 19th with a rain date of the next day.
I'll make that motion, second.
20th to hold the first Caitlin Burnett Memorial Scholarship Soccer Tournament. Motion's made and seconded to approve, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Second is a request for the renewal of a private detective license issued to Robert P. Skippington.
Motion to approve, second.
Discussion on that, all in favor? Aye. A request from Fred Bodden III to renew his license to haul refuse to the town transfer station.
Motion to approve, second.
Discussion, all in favor? Put it in the calendar.
Motion placed in second calendar on file, let's see what you want, hold anything for discussion.
Second, motion made and seconded, further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Payment of bills.
Motion to pay the bills, second.
Discussion, all in favor? Good being of further business to report the council, I declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Appreciate the participation and the information that moved back and forth.
Thank you for your, your welcoming, our, the members of the.